Welcome to the April 1st Solar County Board of Supervisors Meeting. We're glad to be here at Lindsay today. We would like to ask you to please stand with us and join us in the flag salute led by Supervisor Ashida and then remain standing for a moment of silence.
Ready salute. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, we'd like to welcome you here. We're glad to be here in the city of Lindsay today. Before we go to our first item, I'd like to turn a moment over to Lindsay's City Manager, Rich Wilkinson.
Wow, thanks. I'm going to turn to the podium.
If you would.
One, I never get to do that.
[laughing]
Rich Wilkinson, City Manager, Chief of Police, welcome, Honorable Board of Supervisors to Lindsay. We're glad to have you here. You guys definitely bring a good crowd with you. So, thanks for showing up and welcome. Just a real quick housekeeping item, and that's the introduction of Vice Mayor Daniel Salinas. He's here with us tonight, Danny.
We have one very excited basketball player.
And of, well, yes. And rightfully so. And of course, our Lindsay Girl Cardinals Valley Champ, Division Champ, basketball team she is running. So, welcome everybody.
We'll introduce him a moment. Like to take up our first item, which is Board of Supervisors matter. We'll start with Supervisor Ennis.
Yes.
For those of you that don't know, we take a little bit of time at the beginning of each meeting to talk about what we did last week, what we're doing this week, and things that are happening in our district.
No. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This weekend, we had a big Sullivan who does the show products for the beef industry and for all the animals, pigs and lambs and everything. Had a special event in Porterville where they put the whole show on, taught the kids how to clip their beef and what all the products were for, and they had demonstrations on showmanship. And it was a two-day deal. And we went out there with my granddaughters. They came over from King City and they really enjoyed it. And I think everybody really enjoyed it, especially our new fairgrounds in Porterville. They really thought that was state-of-the-art. Tomorrow at noon, I will be having a gang summit meeting in Porterville as we continue to work with City of Porterville on Step Up and their gangs and their mini-gang summits. Then in the afternoon, I'll be going to Visalia to the Laffgo meeting, which I'll be filling in for Supervisor Wordley, who's in Washington DC with the Air Board. And then I'd also like to commend our marijuana task force. I like seeing that paperwork coming across my desk and to believe it or not, we're starting to hit these marijuana, illegal marijuana grow sites already. And I've had five come across my desk in the 5th District. So, very pleased with what's going on there and thanks for what those guys do every day to keep this, our county safe. Thank you. That's all I have.
Supervisor Ashida.
Last Wednesday, I attended the Rural County Supervisors Meeting. And that's our Board of Directors made up of 34 different counties in the state of California. And they're mostly rural counties. The chairman gave us five minutes to Supervisor Larry Ruth Stoller to talk about the water bond. And what we explained to them is the fact that in almost all the water bonds, no one has ever allocated any money to the source counties, to the mountain counties, where all the water starts. So, the chairman gave us a conference room. We had 30 minutes to talk over what we're trying to accomplish in the water bond. And number one, storage is the primary goal of all our counties. And we also want to make sure that we get some money to where the mountain counties can do some thinning, which also increases water production, but also reduces catastrophic fire risks. On Thursday, I stayed in the Capitol. I met with the different chiefs of staff of different elected officials. I met with Anthony Rirdan's chief of staff about the water bond because he has a water bond going. And it seems like the main hang-up of the water bond is that the Democrats who control the legislature and the governor do not want to put in continuous appropriations. And continuous appropriations means every year, they have to appropriate money for the different projects. If they do not have continuous appropriations, they could pass the bill and never fund the project. So, quite frankly, I told Mr. Rirdan's chief of staff that the reason we need continuous appropriations is the fact that we don't trust the legislature or the governor to fund the water bond. He was a little taken back by that. He got a little defensive, but that's the fact. I don't think any of us really trust our state government funding what they need to fund. I met with Senator Gene Fuller, staff Anthony Canales, Andy Biedax, and the last meeting I had was with our own Connie Conway. So, what we're trying to accomplish with San Joaquin County, which is a Delta County, is we've come to an agreement on projects. We're not fighting each other. We're not having a regional fight, which everybody's used before, the Deltas against the San Joaquin Valley Counties. It's not true. So, hopefully, by the time we get through this process, we're going to have 40 to 50 counties in the state of California write support for a water bond. But we're going to put in what we want to support. We're not going to wait for the legislature to hammer out what their political interests are. So, that's what we did, what I did in Sacramento. On Friday, I went to Madera. We had a San Joaquin Joint Powers Agreement meeting, and this group is taking over Amtrak in the Central Valley. So, our business plan will be done by July, and we should be ready to take over the Amtrak line in the Central Valley by the 1st of next year. The reason this group was formed is we're trying to increase the service in the Central Valley for Amtrak. We are the last segment of Amtrak in California that is being run by Caltrans. The other two segments, the Capital Quarter and the Surfliner, have already been taken over by groups like ours, and they've improved the service. We have one of the highest ridership's fare box return is 58 cents on the dollar. If you know anything about public transportation, it's highly subsidized. But the San Joaquin Valley Rail Line is one of the most productive lines in the United States. So, we hope to take that over in January 2015 in that Soli.
Thank you, Supervisor Vanderpool.
All right. Well, this week, my announcement is very exciting. I'm usually very busy, well, actually, every week, I'm extremely busy and really am working hard. And I'm still working hard, but a new aspect of my life has taken my attention. Last Wednesday at 8:08 in the morning, my first son was born, Pete John IV. And that's a very exciting, that's a very exciting development in my life. He's cute as can be. He's healthy and mom's healthy. So, I'm kind of relegated to doing as much as I can from a computer and from a cellphone. But I made it here this evening, thankfully, because my wife slept in the nursery last night and I got to sleep in our bed. So, really thankful for that and really looking forward to what life will bring as a dad and of course, continuing as a supervisor. And we were working on getting a picture up, but I couldn't get it over to Will in time. So, I'm sorry.
Thank God, little Pete looks like his mom.
I did issue a challenge to Supervisor Vanderpool a couple of weeks ago. That was to change the first diaper, and he did.
I did. I did.
So, I think that...
My knuckles are permanently stained.
You're supposed to...
Yeah.
Okay. I have a few quick things. May 8th, at the Fox Theater in Visalia, we have the culmination of the Step Up Challenge. We'll hear a little bit about the challenge later on this evening, but we have 23 schools countywide participating in service projects, and they will be recognized on May 8th. And we also have schools from the area here in Lindsay as well. Last Wednesday, I had the opportunity to speak to the Latino Rotary, talk to them about the Step Up Program, what it is, a loop bus. Tomorrow, we will meet, Allison and I will meet with our HHSA and CSET in regards to the lead mentoring program, which is in the middle of a pilot program in Visalia. Will be expanded to Visalia and Tulare next year. June 21st, we have worked with the city of Lindsay here with their staff to sponsor a Step Up Basketball Tournament. We're expecting up to 500 players to come in and participate here in that tournament. So, it'll be an exciting time and ought to bring a lot of folks here to Lindsay on that day as well, which is a Saturday. Next week, our board will not hold a meeting on Tuesday. The majority of our board will be in Washington DC, meeting with our legislators and their staff. And that's all I have. I'd like to turn the time now over to Supervisor Ashida, who will take care of our first proclamation. We have some very wonderful young ladies to honor today.
It's my pleasure today to give this proclamation to the Lindsay High School Girls Basketball Team for its 2013/14 Central Section Division Four Valley Championships. With a great deal of pleasure and being proud of you ladies, you did a fine job. If I could have you join me in the well, and Coach Frankie, if you could all join me. And I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the Division Four of California in a Scholastic Federation Central Section is comprised of high school basketball teams covering Fresno, Madera, Kings, Kern, and Tulare Counties. And whereas on March 8th, 2014, the Lindsay High School Girls Basketball Team beat Arosi High School 15 to 38 in the Central Section Division Four Championship Match at Sullen Arena. Whereas the team knew they wanted to be, what they wanted from the start, they wanted to get another ring and another plaque. They left the game with three consecutive championship game appearances and a back-to-back Valley Titles. Whereas with most competition this year, the win was made harder, but felt better than the first win. The team knew it was not going to be easy, but they showed Arosi who's real, who the real Cardinals were. Those are kind of fighting words, aren't they? And now therefore be proclaimed that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby honor the Lindsay High School Girl Basketball Team for winning the 2013 Central Section Division Four Valley Championships and giving them their second consecutive Valley Title. So, congratulations to everyone.
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Ashida, and the Board of Supervisors for this opportunity, everybody here. I'd like to also thank my assistant coaches, Ms. Steve Villarreal and Danny Salinas. They worked for their time and patience with myself and the girls. We, my third year coaching, our first year that we've gone, that we went, we lost to San Joaquin Memorial. When we left that, it was, we knew that we were going to work very hard to get back and not leave with that feeling. So, last year, we went, we enjoyed that win. This year, it's just the pressure that we had and where we needed to be and where we were, these girls didn't look past any opponent. We took game by game. So, when we got to Sullen Arena, that was just, it was an exciting win for us. It was a tough game, exciting win for us. But these girls work hard on and off the court. You have to realize, these are student athletes, and five of the seniors are headed and a to either four-year college or JC, majority of them are four-year college. So, it made my job a little easier is we, as a coach, you put all these Xs and Os on paper and they have to follow through with them. And it was much easier because I had a lot of coaches on the court. They knew what was expected and they did that. Very pleased with this team. I'm very honored to have a great group of athletes that stand in front of you. I am going to announce their names. This is Senior Megan Salinas, Senior Destiny Garcia, Senior Alexis Gutierrez, Senior Ashley Baker. We have sophomore Sal Arguas, freshman Raquel Gonzalez, freshman Matty Caesar, sophomore Janessa Martinez, and again, Ms. Steve Villarreal and Danny Salinas. Again, thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have another proclamation. We'd like to invite Billy Shaw to come forward. She has a short presentation she'd like to make, and then we will present her with a proclamation.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Staff, and Community Members. It's April and I'm back to remind you, it's tax time. No. No. It's National Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, as it was last April, we met in Farmersville. So, I brought you a new blue ribbon and some information, 10 things you can do to prevent child abuse, and some statistics about child abuse in this country. And I hope that you will wear it when you go to Washington and that they might, some of those legislators might ask you what it means, because they might not know. Anyway, the members of the Child Abuse Prevention Council are hoping that you will wear it all month. All over Tulare County, we're telling people, it shouldn't hurt to be a child, be their voice. Oh, you can keep the extras and whoever would like them. So, all your support is greatly appreciated. You're amazing. We know you stand with us in our goal to prevent abuse and neglect, and that's great. You may think this is one cause out of many social causes, because I know you hear about a lot of them. But I suggest to you, if you're concerned about gangs, if you're concerned about substance abuse, dropout rates, mental illness, homelessness, crime, you might consider that these social issues often stem from early experiences of child abuse and neglect. And that those children who experience this at a young age, when their brains are developing, carry this their whole lives. It doesn't just go away. So, all of those social ills that you deal with all the time and our society deals with, in many cases, stem from these experiences. So, you can see how it is important it is that we get to the root cause of some of these things. So, we hope that if we prevent child abuse and neglect, we will reduce the numbers of those who are engaged in some of these activities, who are suffering, and these long-term consequences. So, people generally have two misconceptions about child abuse. The first one is, and I've told you this before, people think that this is something that the professionals can take care of. And I have to tell you again, if we coulda, we woulda, but we can't. It's not possible. We need everyone. The second thing is that people think that there's nothing ordinary people can do about this. And I gave you a piece of paper with 10 things you could do, anybody could do to reduce abuse and neglect. My number one thing in Tulare County that I ask people to do is change your thinking. So, people think that they're not connected, and we say to people, everyone in this county is responsible for every child in this county. And if you see abuse and neglect, you need to make the call. If you don't make the call, you protect the perpetrators and forget the victims. And we've had lots of publicity across the nation about institutions who chose to do that, and it was not a good decision. So, we have, and you'll see in the fact sheet, in this country, five children die every day from abuse and neglect. And some of it happens in Tulare County. You all read the paper, you know. That's the highest number in any industrial country in the world, and it's way too high. There are some cases that have happened in Tulare County that they're heartrending. And the only thing you can do for those children is to make a personal pledge that you do everything, I do everything we can to prevent it from ever happening again. So, each year, the Tulare County Child Abuse Prevention Council seeks to do more activity to bring about awareness throughout the county. We have events this year in all the little towns all over, from early March to Lindsay. There's one in Lindsay, Woodlake, Farmersville, and of course, in Visalia. I want to invite you to the March on Main, which is this Saturday, down Main Street. Starting, you have to assemble at 9:00, and it's a quick march. It's only a couple of blocks. But it's a way to stand for those who have suffered abuse and neglect. So, if you feel like it, we'd love to have you. So, there's always more to do. There's always more people needed. We're putting the message on marquees at the schools where we can make the contact. It's a high-impact, low-cost awareness, and it's, the parents get to see it. So, there's a lot more we could do, and we will seek to do more, accomplish more. And someday, we envision in this county, that the cases of neglect and abuse will decrease and that everyone in this county works together to ensure child well-being. So, thank you again for all your support. We appreciate it. I'm hanging this on the wall with my number three.
Billy, I'd like to present this proclamation to you. And while she was talking, one of the things that was going through my head is that a lot of times, people think, oh, you know what? Everybody saw that. The guy next to me will make the call, or they'll take care of that. And I'm very fortunate to have a wife who, when she sees something, whether I see it or not, she takes, she wants to take care of it. Like right now, last week, we were driving down the street, and she goes, did you see that? I think there was about a two-year-old child walking down the street with no adult. So, we went around the block and there was no one there. Pat my wife on the back.
Will you pat her on the back?
But she was, she goes, I mean, I said, did you see that? She yelled, did you see that? And she said, turn around right now. We were on a one-way street, so I had to go around the block. But don't assume the other guy's going to make the call. You know, don't assume, oh, you know, everybody saw that. I'm busy, I'll leave it up to them, because I'm looking at our law enforcement. Does everyone make the call? No, they don't. They don't make the call. And that's unfortunate. So, I'd like, I'm not going to read the whole thing, because I think it probably says the same thing as the others that we presented over the last few years. But we do want to proclaim April 2014 as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in Tulare County. Thank you.
We appreciate her too.
Okay. I'd like to have Battalion Chief Whittendale, Tulare County Fire, come up and address the board. And then we'll also have Fire Chief Garcia and Sheriff Boudreau come up. And I will present them with a proclamation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, CAO, County Council, Members of the Public. I'm Joe Garcia, Tulare County Fire Chief. I'd like to introduce Claudia Whitendale, who oversees, she oversees our Firecom. And I would also like to introduce Gloria Simoes, who is our Firecom Supervisor, and she makes sure that things run well. Emergency dispatchers are a very important and integral part of any emergency service agency, whether it be the fire department or whether it be the sheriff's department. Unfortunately, they work behind the scenes, they work in the background, okay? They go and recognize the firefighters, the deputy sheriffs get all the glory, which they do. But you know what? In reality, they are our frontlines when it comes to dealing with the public. When the public needs them, who do they call? They go 911. Who do they get? They get a dispatcher. They are frontline representatives. And in many instances, they're there to not only take the call, but to comfort the person, to calm him down, and to bring order to what otherwise would be chaos. I really marvel at what they do and how they do it. I've been there when they're dealing with multiple incidents. And you got, you know, you got multiple fires, you got, you may have a vehicle accident, you may have a fire going on, a structural fire, you may have a vehicle fire. They've got multiple incidents, and they do it so calmly. Okay? They do it with a great presence of mind, okay? And a very refined focus to the task at hand. So, I'm in awe of these people. I'd like to have Claudia say a few words.
A few words? I know better. It's our request that the Board of Supervisors adopt a resolution proclaiming the week of April 13th to April 19th as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Tulare County. The public safety dispatchers are a very important part of our first response team. Even though you don't see them, they're behind the scenes. They've helped many individuals in their time of need, and they've also helped to save lives. The health and safety of all of our citizens depend on these dedicated professionals. This week of recognition is a time for the county to show its appreciation for the commitment and the devotion of these county employees, the public safety dispatcher professionals. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, good evening, Members of the Board. If I could actually have, I have a few emergency dispatchers here this evening as well. If I could have them stand and come to my side, I would sure appreciate it. I think the chief put it best, there's so much that goes on behind the microphone that we don't understand. I've been in the dispatching center where we have children screaming in pain and screaming in fear. We have wives who are screaming out because their husbands are beating them. We have people that are involved in shooting, stabbings, and you name it. What we do as officers is we respond to those scenes, but the true heroes are those behind the microphone. I've been down in that dispatch center, and I've worked in that dispatch centers when I was younger in my career. And I have to tell you, if I could magically transport myself through the front of that microphone and into that scene, I would. But how they sit there so calmly and continue to do multitasking, when I say multitasking, it's not chewing gum and walking and patting your head and rubbing your belly. They are dispatching emergency services through fire, ambulance, they're getting multiple levels of law enforcement and multiple levels of resources all at once through one microphone. And the experience of what they are and what they represent, I couldn't be any prouder. And what you have before you at my side here are some of the most experienced in our staff. And they're very, very good at what they do. So, that when you dial 911 and you have an officer respond and he shows up on scene... So, when you dial 911, and you have an officer respond, and he shows up on scene, these are the people we thank. Because they send that message out clearly and calmly, and they send the confusion that comes through the telephone, and make it clear through the microphone. So, tonight, I just appreciate the fact that our emergency services dispatchers are being recognized. I think it's an important part of what we represent for the community and the safety to our community. So, thank you very much.
Don't sit down yet, you gotta be in the picture. Well, I know how this board feels. When you dial that number, we want a sheriff, a fireman, our emergency medical vehicle show up at your door in a timely manner, and I think that's what these folks are responsible for, and they've been doing a good job at it. I do have a proclamation here tonight, and I would like to read a little bit of it to you. Emergencies can occur at any time that require law enforcement, fire, emergency medical services. When the emergency occurs, prompt response by law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians is critical to the protection of life, preservation of property. The safety of our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians is dependent upon the quality and the accuracy of the information obtained from the citizens who telephone the various Tulare County dispatch centers. Public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Public safety dispatchers provide the single vital link for our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. Public safety dispatchers of Tulare County have contributed substantially to apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby declare the week of April 13th through the 19th National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Tulare County. And that's signed by Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpool, Phil Cox, Stephen Wordley, and Mike Ennis. Thank you for all you do on a day of...
Move approval.
Moved by Ashida.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Vanderpool. All in favor?
Aye.
Is unanimous. Supervisor Wordley is in Washington, DC this week. We'll now move to item number five, Supervisor Vanderpool.
All right. I will go ahead and present a proclamation proclaiming April 7th through 13th as Healthy Tulare County Week, but I'd first like Dr. Hott to come up and say a few words, if you would. And Dr. Gooden is here also, but you're a physician doctor, doctors of public health and doctor of physicians, so it's pretty cool to be well-represented in the medical field. So, go ahead.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, CAO, and County Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today or this evening to request, on behalf of the Health Advisory Committee and the Department of Public Health, that the week of April 7th be declared Healthy Tulare County Week, coinciding with the National Public Health Week. This will give us an opportunity to reflect on all the factors throughout our communities that impact our health, and to think about what steps we, as individuals, communities, businesses, and organizations can take to help each other to be healthy. So, during that week, we have activities planned, different activities throughout the week, to highlight different aspects of prevention and public health. We are focusing on Monday, WIC services and healthy beginnings for infants and children. We're partnering with OES to promote enrollment in Alert TC for all our Tulare County residents, and with all their telephone numbers. Partnering with the fire stations throughout the county for blood pressure screening, working on promoting physical activity, working with HR&amp;D for our own employees, promoting physical activity, and in a walk-to-school event in Orosee. And promoting healthy nutrition and safe food through... working with WorkSite Wellness of HR&amp;D, and in our WIC, our Visalia Healthcare Center and our Tulare Works offices, and promoting... showcasing our chronic disease self-management program, Healthy Living Sessions. So, those are some of our activities for the week, too. And we encourage everyone to participate in steps to keep us all healthy. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank all the members of the Public Health Department staff who are very dedicated and have worked very hard all year, and also our Health Advisory Committee for their commitment, and to thank all of you, and to thank the other members of HHSA, other county departments, and other organizations, schools, and businesses, and healthcare providers throughout the county who work to address all aspects of our lives and our community that impact our health. So, thank you all. And it's my privilege right now to introduce Dr. William Gooden, a family practitioner in Porterville for 32 years, and he's our vice chair of our Health Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, and I'd like to thank the Board for having enough care and support of your constituents to support this committee and support the Healthy Tulare County Week. Also, I'd like to especially thank Pete for allowing me to co-chair with him. He's, I think, deeply interested in the health of our county, in both the physical area as well as he also chairs the Mental Health Committee, I believe, which we actually have dire need in this community, in this county, in that area as well. I'd like to thank Karen, who is just as much a clinician as I, just in the public health arena. She's worked tirelessly for many years to help preserve the health and welfare of our county. And I'd like to thank my patients especially for giving me the honor for 32 years of trying to serve them. I can see a few out there, and it's been an honor to practice here. And as the old saying goes, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And that's exactly what we're trying to address tonight, so thank you. Thank you. And one more thing, before I forget it, I'd like to thank the Board for, on behalf of those of us who have fought for our country to... by preserving the Pledge Allegiances to the Flag, which seems to disappear from many arenas around our country. Thank you.
All right. Dr. Gooden and Dr. Hott, if you would join me here in the... well, you're already close, but you know, I just want to feel even more esteemed with two doctors, one on either side of me. It'd be even better if you were doctors carrying guns, but... okay, I know I'm in good health. All right, great. We've got plenty of guns in the room, so we're good, we're good. Well, it's my pleasure to be here and present this proclamation, recognizing April 7th through 13th as Healthy Tulare County Week. Whereas evidence-based public health and prevention policies result in healthier communities and reduce costs of treating disease, and whereas public health is what we, as a society, do to collectively assure the conditions for people to be healthy, and whereas health is determined by factors such as social policy, environment, and education, new policies should be addressed, assessed to understand potential health impacts. And whereas climate change is one of the most critical sustainability issues threatening human and environmental health, social well-being, and economic and agricultural vitality of our communities, and whereas improving nutrition and physical activity, decreasing tobacco use, preventing injury, and implementing high-impact, quality chemical or clinical and preventative services will improve the health of our county, and whereas preventable chronic diseases such as heart disease, cancer, and diabetes are responsible for millions of premature deaths in the U.S. each year, and whereas research has found that students' health affects... students' health affects their grades, attendance, behavior, and whether they graduate or not, healthier children learn better, and whereas research shows that investments in the workplace wellness programs can reap positive impacts on workers' health and healthcare costs, making prevention good business sense. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby declare the week of April 7th to be Healthy Tulare County Week to coincide with National Public Health Week. This proclamation is signed by Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpool, Phil Cox, Stephen Wordley, and Michael Ennis. And I really do appreciate the work that each of you do in your respective capacities, because we know that a healthier community is a better community, and there are numerous issues that we really do face here in Tulare County that we have to overcome, and it's the work that you do on the front lines, and really on the policy side, and as much public health as you deal with each and every day that make the real differences in the lives of Tulare County residents. Sometimes, it's not easy to quantify, and you don't see it immediately, but you know that your efforts will have a lasting impact on our county residents and on making Tulare County a better and safer and healthier place. And so, I've served as the Chair of the Health Advisory Council for... our committee for, I think, three years or four years, however long it's been in existence, and it's really a pleasure of mine. I serve on the Mental Health Board, and I really do think this is one of the best things that government can do, is be proactive, not by implementing mandates, but by encouraging people to improve their own habits and livelihoods and well-being. So, really a pleasure to work with you and serve with you, and I sure appreciate all that you do.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Thank you. You gotta... yeah, thanks. All right, Dr. Hott, I'll leave you. I know you're a little camera shy, but don't leave that. I'll cover your nose. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Take care. Yeah, thank you.
This is also an action item. We're seeing a motion.
Move for approval.
Seconded by Ennis, seconded by Ashida. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Supervisor Wordley is in Washington, DC.
Supervisor Cox?
Yes, sir.
Before you go to public comment, with all the proclamations and resolutions that we've done today, reminding you the fact that maybe next year, we could have a proclamation stating that April is Tulare County Board of Supervisors' birthday month, because the three of us were all born in April.
Yeah. So, we'll neglect September? I mean, because that's my month.
And Phil and I on the same day.
Couple of years apart.
Two.
So, but before we go to public comment, by way of announcement, item number 22, which was our untimed items, is going to be moved to July 29th meeting, and that is a presentation that will be by Child Support Services regarding overview of their functions and responsibilities. So, if you're here for that tonight, I apologize, that is going to be moved to July 29th. Now, moving on to item number six, public comment period. If you'd like to address the Board on an issue that is not on tonight's agenda, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and we'll limit you to three minutes. Anybody wishing to address the Board during public comment period? Seen none, we will...
There's one.
Oh, gotta be quicker out here.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Renee Salazar. I've been living here for about 30 years. I live literally two blocks from here. I grew up here. I've seen so many changes go on, but some of the changes still persist. We still live in a county where, if there's 100 of us here, 25 of us live under poverty. If there's 100 of us, only 13 of us has a bachelor's degree. There's a lot of things to be done. COS has cut summer schools, classes, courses, Porterville College as well, and it just seems amazing how there's money for $80 million courthouse in Porterville. They might close down. There's $68 million for a prison in Porterville. It just seems amazing how there's money for that, but not money being invested in education. I think education is the key. I think we need to look into that. Not only that, we live in a county where 22 percent, according to the census, 22 percent of the people in here, 22 percent are born in another country, which means many of them are illegal immigrants. In 2007, former Mayor Ed Murray was quoted by the Los Angeles Times, saying that, "We need illegal immigrants to be documented. They need to find a way." We live in this county where a lot of farm is based on labor, a lot of it coming from illegal immigrants. So, my question to you, I'm proud of former Mayor Ed Murray for standing up. What about you guys, standing up for illegal immigration and saying, "Now is the time. Now is the time. Now is the time. We need a reform, and we need leaders like yourselves." By the way, your differences of what party you're from, Republicans or Democrats, Ed Murray is a Republican. Now is the time. We need leaders like you guys to start really representing all of your constituents, all of your constituents. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salazar. Anyone else wishing to address the Board at this time? Okay, seen none, we'll move to our consent calendar of items eight through 20. We've not received any requests to pull any items. Any Board member would like to have an item pulled for separate consideration?
Mr. Chair, I'll just make one comment. We don't need to pull it, but let me just comment on the item 16, which is the Pixley Safe Routes of School Project. I know we are going to have to... we are going to be voting to reject all bids and rebid the project. However, I do want to say that the project's timeline and funding has not been put in jeopardy by this action, and that's been my justification for supporting going forward, so just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Any member of the public wishing to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seen none, entertain a motion.
Move for approval. I'll second that.
Moved by Ennis, seconded by Vanderpool. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Supervisor Wordley is in Sacramento, Washington, DC this week. Okay, we'll now move to our timed item, which is a public hearing. Mr. Spata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mr. CAO, County Council. Mike Spata, RMA. The matter before you is a public hearing relating to the submission of an application for approval for the 2014 CDVG program. Essentially, there are three funding categories within this application. First category is public improvements in support of housing new construction, housing rehabilitation, and planning and technical assistance. This matter was before you, as required by law, in a public hearing in late January of this year, and this is the second public hearing tonight that is also required by law, requesting your final approval of the application and submission to the State Community and Housing Development Department. With regard to the public improvements, the application requests approximately $1.4 million to construct sewer infrastructure in the community of Traver. Specifically, that infrastructure would relate to a new force main and connection system. With regard to the housing rehabilitation, approximately $372,000 is being requested in this application to provide lateral water and sewer connections in the London area of the county. And then finally, with regard to planning and technical assistance, there are two studies that are being requested, from which we hope to leverage these dollars and to carry out our mandates with regard to, one, the housing element, in that there is approximately $45,000 for a housing survey to support that effort. Next year, the housing element is up for consideration and reapproval by your Board. And the second item is a market analysis relating to our early March community planning process that is ongoing. This market analysis is to do a supply and demand, absorption, and pricing analysis in order to support the economic community with regard to their business decisions. With that, Mr. Chairman, this is a public hearing, and after the public hearing, we request approval of this application to be submitted to the State and related items that are in the agenda.
Any questions of staff? Okay, seen none, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the Board on this item? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. There being none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the Board for action.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of this item.
I'll second that.
Moved by Vanderpool, seconded by Ennis. All in favor?
Aye.
So, unanimous, with Supervisor Wordley is in Washington, DC this week. Our next item is item number 20... Some of the information is updated, so I have some exciting news to share with you regarding District One. So since 2007, if you'll look, the number has increased. Over 104,000 county residents have participated in or have been a part of Step Up Tulare County's Gain Prevention Task Force. And in District One alone, residents have had the opportunity to be a part of a community-based summit, and one happened recently in Strathmore. With the help of Tulare County probation, we couldn't have done it without them, and they did a great job assisting us with that event, and that took place in March, just a month ago. We also have the Summer Night Lights Program. It has taken place the last three years in Farmersville and has made, has been made possible through the partnership of the Boys and Girls Club of the Sequoias. From 2011 to 2013, 834 participated in the program. However, there's no plans to have Summer Night Lights in Farmersville, unfortunately, this year. However, they will be expanding the program to be in Ivanhoe, Exeter, and it will also be in Lindsay. So we're really excited about that. More details coming soon. We've had the Youth Commission and Youth Activities Grants taking place, and a total of $85,000 just alone in District One have been given to the following organizations for youth activities, and they are the Boys and Girls Club of the Sequoias, Healthy Kids, Healthy Lindsay, Tulare Kings, Youth for Christ, Courage the Change, and El Quinto del Sol. Youth Challenge 2013, this is 2013-14, this is our third year, and we have several middle schools and one high school participating. They are Jefferson School in Lindsay, Valley Oak Middle School in Visalia, Washington School in Lindsay, and Wilson Middle School in Exeter, and Lindsay High School. And I had the opportunity, by the way, to visit the high school in Lindsay, and they're doing a really good job on their project. They will be turning in their final reports April 25th. Now, we had the Step Up Law Enforcement Event this past fall, and 150 law enforcement personnel from throughout the county attended the event with speakers that addressed safety and stress management, with members of the Sheriff's Department, probation, Exeter, Farmersville, and Lindsay PD that are attending as well. The Step Up Urban Art Tour, woo-hoo, is finishing. Yay. Tomorrow, I pick up the art from Government Plaza, which is, just was the last stop, 11 stops since January every week, and it made a stop this year in Exeter, Lindsay, and Strathmore. Now, the Loop bus, over 50,000 youth have in Tulare County have had the opportunity to travel throughout the county since 2007. A couple example of trips, Golden West students had the opportunity to visit Coia Delta dialysis to learn EMS skills. Strathmore students traveled to Save Mart in Porterville to experience the behind the scenes of a grocery store, which is kind of cool. And then Farmersville students were transported to Payless Shoes in Visalia to get free shoes. And that's a special program through Boys and Girls Club. Now, the numbers are showing the ridership, and as you notice, it's ticking up. We're partway through the year. We're trending at about 5% over last year, and last year, 17,000 participated in the Loop program. So we'll be 5% more, at least 5% more than that. So up and coming in District One. Well, what's going on? Teams are competing in this year's Youth Challenge, and winners will be announced this May 8th, Thursday, May 8th, mark your calendars, at the red carpet event that will be taking place at Visalia Fox Theater. The Summer Night Lights Program will be taking place in Exeter, Ivanhoe, and Lindsay, and they will kick off in June and run through August. The Youth Activities Grants will be announced sometime soon, possibly as soon as a month or so from now, the recommendations should be made. And there is a countywide, as Supervisor Cox announced, countywide basketball tournament. We're expecting above 50 teams to descend upon McDermott on Saturday, June 21st, which we're really excited about. And then, of course, Loop requests are increasing daily. I would be remiss if I didn't include other information and that are happening, Step Up events that are happening in other parts of the county. We have Step Up Ivanhoe that's taking place this Friday, the 4th. Woodlake is taking place on Friday, April 25th. Goshen is taking place on Friday, I mean Thursday, May 15th. And we have partnered with the Family Crisis Center of Central California and having the Youth Summit that's taking place on Saturday, April 12th. That will be an all-day event. They're expecting upwards of...
600 to 800.
600 to 800 youth descending at Port Naz in Porterville. So if you're interested in that information, it'll be on our website. And of course, we want to thank our partners. We have a picture here of the Boys and Girls Club, but of course, we're really excited about the partnership that we will, we just recently began to develop with the city of Lindsay, and we're really excited about bringing youth programming to this community. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions? Allison, thank you so much. in regards to tentative map 785. Mr. Spata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff. This matter was continued from your March 25th meeting, and I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, what we're going to do, I know the applicant is here, we're going to allow the applicant three minutes. If you have any new information that you would like to present to the board, either an applicant or opponent of the project, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. If you have anything new, please step forward. Okay, seen none, there are no questions for Mr. Spata?
No, I don't have any questions.
Any comments?
I have a comment. About this project, I'm not against it. In fact, the project's a viable project. I would like to see the size of the lots cut back to 54, and I would like to have the lots closer to Fraser Valley Highway, the larger, so that they're more aesthetic with the houses around it. I would like to have a water quality and water supply report be prepared by the applicant. And I would also like to propose a revised condition of approval of the, the conditions of approval of the tentative map and any other matters relevant to proceedings. So what I would like to see is to continue this to June 24th as a date and come back with the water supply and quality report and a 54-lot tentative map submit. That's what I would like to see.
Is that a motion?
That would be my motion.
Second. Okay, motion by Supervisor Ennis, second by Supervisor Ashida. Any questions before we vote? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, defending? Okay, that's unanimous. Supervisor Worthley being in Washington DC this week. Okay, we'll now move to item number 24, which is a request from our County Administrative Office to receive input and provide direction regarding our federal legislative priorities entry to Washington DC.
Good evening, Debbie Vaughn, County Administrative Office.
Debbie, can you pull the mic up a little bit, please? Thank you. Just thank you.
Debbie Vaughn, County Administrative Office. As you're aware, your board is scheduled for your annual advocacy trip to Washington DC on April 8 through 10. And before you, you have two lists. Exhibit A shows you the list of issues that were up for discussion last year, and Exhibit B are issues that staff has proposed for discussion for this trip. And you will see that there's a lot of similarity in the issues, and I'm just going to go down them quickly. The reason for the similarity, for example, for payment in lieu of taxes and secure rural schools from last year to this year, is that historically, those programs were five-year programs. They were authorized for longer-term bills, and Congress has been unable to reauthorize them for an extended period of time, so they've just been renewing them annually. And so it's an annual sort of concerted effort by county associations to continue to get this funding. At this time, payment in lieu of taxes, which is payments to counties for, in lieu of tax revenue that they receive from federal property, is in the President's budget, but there, it's not currently in any sort of bill or up for a long-term appropriation of any kind. Last year, it was extended at the last minute through the farm bill as a one-year extension. And last year, as you can see, we, we being Tulare County, received just under $3 million for the program. The, I'm going to skip one. The next issue, secure rural schools and community self-determination. Historically, counties received a percentage of sales, of timber sales on public lands, and when the timber sales began to reduce, this program was put in place to sort of fill the gap of that lost revenue for rural roads and rural schools. Over the last five years, the program has declined in funding about 45%. And again, it's a program that has yet to be reauthorized on a long-term basis for Congress, by Congress. The second item, the one that I skipped over, is the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program. It's commonly referred to as SCAP, and that's a program that the Sheriff's Department receives for incarcerating criminal aliens in the jail facilities. And there's some criteria to when they can claim for reimbursement for that. But this year, they received just under $900,000 for it, and that sounds like a lot of money, but it's actually, it averages about 10% of their actual cost to incarcerate. So it's, it's critically important to the department, and there is currently no funding for the program in the President's budget. Under marijuana eradication, I know this is an issue that your board addresses in a number of manners, a number of manners. There's a couple different proposed requests. The first is that the federal government remove the overtime cap. And what that is, it's a cap on how much overtime can be paid to one individual across federal programs. You've asked for it before. There still continues to be an issue where it's a DOJ policy. They're saying that they cannot, there's not a mechanism to change their policy, but we cannot find anything in legislation that dictates that it's a necessity. The second request would be that the Office of National Drug Control Policy continue to fund the high-intensity drug trafficking area program in our area. They did not fund it in 2013. It's not proposed to be funded in 2014. The next request related to marijuana eradication is that, as your board is aware, the U.S. Attorney's Office issued revised guidelines last spring, and they did that to address the issues with Colorado and the state of Washington legalizing marijuana use. The problem is that your board was already advocating for increased federal prosecution of particularly some of the larger sites that were real problem areas, and under the new guidelines, the Sheriff's Office has not had any federal filings at all because they've even made them more difficult for us to find a nexus, us being the Sheriff's The next proposed issue is related to the last one. What we've heard from the U.S. Attorney's Office is that even if they did take more cases and file them, it would take a considerable amount of time to get them through the court system because our Eastern District Court in Fresno that hears these cases is overburdened. They have the highest caseload. There's recently been some transition where they're going to move some civil cases to Sacramento area, but that doesn't alleviate the criminal judge from the extremely large caseload that he has. The next issue is Lake Success, and as you're aware, this has been, there was a, it was proposed that the lake would be enlarged in 2003. Shortly thereafter, three months thereafter, the Army Corps of Engineers put the project on hold due to seismic concerns. Last year, we thought that we were finally getting to a point in time where we were going to get what the Corps refers to as a baseline risk assessment to be reviewed by the Corps' senior oversight group in order for them to determine what the risks are with the dam and what the dam's safety rating would be. That was supposed to be done last summer, and it's been delayed four times since then. And so the proposal would be that the board asks that there be no more delays with that assessment so that we can, and also based on what the outcome of that is, what the rating is, that we move forward with a plan to get it to a DSEC 4 and perhaps simultaneously enlarge so that we have additional storage capacity at Lake Success. The next issue is related to the drought and the overall concept of water infrastructure. And the suggestion would be that the board advocates for increased storage and appropriations for storage for California's water system with an emphasis on above-ground storage. The second request is that recently, the USDA, the state and the federal government have issued some emergency actions related to the drought to help the agricultural community. And those programs are great, but they focused on livestock grazing, grazing properties, crops that can be followed for one year, and what there isn't any relief for are any permanent crops. And in our county in particular, our citrus belt, a lot of that area has difficulty getting groundwater, and so there is a, as you heard with the emergency declaration a few weeks ago, a real probability that a lot of farmers are going to lose some permanent crop land. So this would be a discussion with USDA and with the legislators about an emergency drought program to assist our permanent crop farmers. And lastly, rural community water systems, as we've discussed before, the USDA has a rural community grant program that does provide grant funding for disadvantaged communities. The problem is that the criteria is so broad that it, there's, the program is oversubscribed, and the waiting list is huge to get those grant funds. And what happens typically is some of our severely disadvantaged communities are unable to access that because they don't have the skills or the resources necessary to apply. And so the proposal would be that they sort of tighten that grant criteria to focus on those communities that are most severely disadvantaged, absent any opportunity to actually increase the overall grant funding. So those would be some suggested topics, and staff is just looking for direction from you as to which of any of those you would like to take with you when you go to DC or any other comments.
Any comments from board?
Well, the only thing I have, Lake Success has always been on there, and that's something that, for my district, is probably one of the focal points that I've worked on ever since I've been on the board. So naturally, I want to make sure that we not only bring it back to capacity, but somehow get it raised to 110,000 acre feet. So hopefully, we're going to get the clean bill of health on. I understand they're going after Marina, which is a good sign. It means maybe the restrictions are going to be taken completely off. But like you say, we need to get to a DSEC 4, and we need to say, hey, what's it going to take to get there? Whether we have to weather the spillway, what have we got to do? The only problem that they've come up with the last time we talked was the overtopping issue, so that will alleviate that. So yeah, I want that on there especially.
Mr. President, Vanderpool?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Really glad to see that water is being brought up, in particular drought relief, as well as quantity, and we're also addressing quality with some of the disadvantaged community issues. I, I think it's very appropriate. A gentleman mentioned earlier in public comment the need for immigration reform. Immigration reform really becomes irrelevant if we don't have waters to supply the farms that supply the jobs for the laborers. So I think it's really important that we hammer this water issue and do what we can at the federal level to make sure that we get the necessary relief and infrastructure so that, you know, we can weather the wet years, the dry years, and be able to maintain a steady level of employment because that literally is the bread and butter of our economy here in Tulare County. So glad to see that.
Supervisor Ashida?
Marijuana eradication. I think with such a good job that our county's been doing on eradication on the valley floor and what Fresno County's knocking down doors every day on marijuana eradication, we're going to see this move again back up to the public lands on federal land. And then we're going to see more and more on federal land because of the success we've had in the valley. So I think that needs to be important, an important item we need to point out to the law enforcement people when we have that meeting. The other issue we have with, I have with the USDA is that some of our counties, the federal government owns 80 to 90% of the land, and they're the source counties for the water that we have in the Sierras and the Cascades. And even if we pass a bond measure, a state bond measure, how do we get that money up there crossing jurisdictional lines to get the job done? And that's what I... And that's what I'd like, if the opportunity arises, that's what I wanna talk to them about. How can we work with the federal government using state funds to clean up our forest land? And the other thing, well, there's a couple things. One thing, people don't forget why the forest is in the USDA, the United States Department of Agriculture. The reason the forest is in the United States Department of Agriculture is because timber was a crop. It was considered a crop just like tomatoes, peaches, or plums. And that's, we have lost that foresight. The other thing I'd like to talk about USDA is this tree replacement as a result of this drought that we have, especially some areas like Terabella where they may have 7,000 acres go out because of the lack of surface water. Those trees need to be replaced. And it takes eight years to get back into production, to decent production. It takes you two, two years, at least a year before you can plant again. Then it takes time to get your mature trees up. And actually, if it takes another year just to get the trees out of the nursery to even get the plant, so you're two years out. So I wanna make sure that on a disaster declaration that we have a vehicle to replace permanent crops, that be any type of permanent crop that are lost as a result of this drought.
So the board, although I had a chance to work with Debbie over the last couple of weeks on this and made several comments, I was, when the President came out and introduced his drought relief program, I was a little offended that there was a type of a penance for some social programs. You know, that's, you know, all $3 million here, three, it's just a small, it's a money increasing social programs and not really addressing the real issues like Supervisor Sheehan has mentioned here. So I, I'd like to see us, you know, maybe revise that a little bit. And I also, so the board knows, and asked Debbie if she could create some visual aids like we take when we go back with TCAG. She wasn't really thrilled about that, but I think a picture is worth a thousand words. You know, we can go back with these two pages of words, but I really think a picture makes a big difference. When you talk about the acreage in Terabella and others, what I asked her to do specifically on this item was to take a shot of the valley, just a map of the valley, and highlight and, you know, color those areas that were gonna be affected, where we could possibly lose these crops. These are permanent crops that, like you said, will take, you know, up to a decade to come back to full production because people don't realize you don't, you know, go down to the nursery and pick up a thousand trees. You know, you have to order those trees, and sometimes you have to order them way in advance. For the record, I was a real thrilled about asking for more federal judges. I think we're wasting breath there, although we do need, you know, those judges to prosecute the, or to, you know, to control these cases that we're trying to get them to take on our behalf and try. That just hasn't been very fruitful. So those were my comments. But I think we've put together a pretty good comprehensive list here. Are there any issues that we'd like to add to this?
You know, when we talk about a picture worth a thousand words, Mr. Coy has some pictures.
You woke him up.
From the 1990 freeze, the trees are foliating. And that's, it's the same picture when they, with the drought with no water, those trees are gonna foliate. They're gonna look brown like they did from the freeze. I think that'd be a, if you can find them, but I think that'd be a good prop to use. They don't even know. But the other side is, the problem we have in Washington DC is we all think Senator Feinstein has a lot of clout. She's been there a long time. She doesn't. She can't move her bill out of the Senate. And that's the problem we have. And I think Californians need to realize that we always thought she had all this clout because of her tenure there. She doesn't have. And when I first got elected to the board 10 years ago, 11 years ago, she was working on a guest farm work program specifically.
For agriculture.
She has not been able to get it through the Senate in nine years. So, you know, I think we need to look at our political clout back in Washington DC and really realize it's not, we don't have much political clout at all.
But this trip will be well worth it. Supervisor Ennis.
Well, I think this pilt is very, very important because since 52 percent of our county is federal land, which we derive nothing off of unless we get our, and move our taxes here, and we certainly not doing any logging up there. So this rural schools deal, I know I serve on that committee, and I think we got $40,000 this year is all we're gonna get. And look at all, we used to pull 100 million board feet a year out of those mountains, and I bet we don't pull 5 million a year out of there. So it's ridiculous. But that's something we need to stay on on that pilt.
Gene, you got any comments before we move on? I think we've given direction.
I think that Debbie, good job, and I look forward to the graphics that you're working on as we speak.
I tell you, that was like herding cats on that one. So this is an action item to get us direction, entertain a motion then?
Move for approval of the direction we've given.
Move by Ennis.
Second.
Second by Sheehan, all's in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Supervisor Worley, this is Washington DC. We'll now move to item number 25, which is a request from our county administrative office to consider four options for our, are we called to the North County or the Sequoia?
Sequoia Field Program Facility is the title right now. So, good evening, members of the board. Mr. Russo, Ms. Beazlang. My name is John Hess with the county administrative office. I'm here to request direction regarding the county's SB 1022 application for funding for the Sequoia Field Program Facility. The SB 2022 program is a state funding program for construction of jails in counties. The county has applied for this funding, was tentatively awarded 40 million, after which there was an appeals process through which Stanislaus was successful in their appeal. And the county, as a result, was reduced in funding by about $6.6 million to about $33.5 million. So the decision package that's in front of you this evening includes the four options as outlined by the state in a letter received to us on March 18th. Subsequent to preparing this staff report and receiving this letter, we've had a conversation with the state, and they've also offered up a fifth option for us. So I'll go through these four and then discuss the fifth option that other counties are now using that the state has described. Option one is to maintain the current project scope by providing additional county funding of $6.6 million to compensate for the funding shortfall, which would mean putting county dollars, whatever that looks like, whatever source of funds that would be, to use, to compensate for that loss of funding. Option two is to amend the project scope commensurate with the amount of available funding of $33.3 million, which means if we had proposed 388 beds, we would reduce that commensurate with whatever amount of beds we could, we could provide with this amount of funding, or whatever that reduction in scope looks like for the project. Option three is decline the partial conditional award amount entirely and just decline to be part of the program. Option four is add partial additional county funding and amend the project scope, so sort of a blend of option one and two, do some sort of combination of whatever funding was available to the county. And option five, as described by the BSCC to staff, is request an extension on this decision, which would allow the county to review and investigate other sources of funding because the letter was received very recently. And so other counties are also looking for additional funding to try and either compensate for the loss of funding, or there is, the governor has proposed a $500 million allocation in next year's budget to jail construction, which is being reviewed right now in committee by the state legislature. And actually, that bill includes increasing it up to $1.2 billion. The state has indicated to us that there's precedent in the past that those future fundings has been in the past used to supplement counties that have received reduced funding amounts. So there's, obviously, there's no, at this time, we don't have any knowledge, there's nothing written in stone, there's nothing concrete about that. But extending, requesting an extension until August 1st is the recommended timeframe by the state would allow those, that situation to play itself out and see if the county could benefit from those sorts of legislation.
Mr. Chairman? Just to make a couple of quick comments, I'm glad that option five is available. I think that's a great option. You know, option two was the recommended option in the staff report, but I'm a little bit familiar with this project. And I thought what made this project so great and so competitive was the fact that it allocated a significant portion to alternative programming and to rehabilitation and classrooms and et cetera, et cetera, so that we're rehabilitating these people and moving them on to become more productive members of our society. And I think that's critical. So scaling down the project would have probably taken away from some of our ability to do that. And I wanna make sure that if we do construct a facility, we do meet the requirements that are necessary for our county to get rid of an operationally expensive facility that we're currently funding to fully operate. And I'd also be curious too to hear from the Sheriff's Department, just a quick comment from them as to what would meet their, their needs and what they see as being important for their department. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
John, is that this August, 2014?
That's right, August 1st, 2014. And Tahama County was another county that's taken that same opportunity to extend.
That's not too far away. I mean, that might be better to try and build a project, like, get them extra money and build a project like we started on. So I don't know what everybody else thinks, but that's what I would try to do, is get that extra money so we can do the project justice, if that's an option.
Mr. Chairman? How does that compact our timeframes or grant?
And that was one of the questions we had for the state. So by requesting an extension, it does not jeopardize the conditional awards, so it would not jeopardize the $33.3 million that we have presently awarded to us. We would just elect to receive that reduced funding later at the end of that extension if we don't have the ability to receive the additional amount of money. If we go with any of the options presently in the options that were provided by the state in their letter, that would begin the process. So requesting an extension essentially delays, postpones the beginning of the 42-month timeframe that the county has to begin the project until that August 1st, or until the state BSCC meets in September to consider our extension.
John, good job with the presentation. Yeah, I concur with Supervisor Vanderpool. You know, we, our office wrote the, the agenda item recommending option two, but with the fifth option coming available literally within the last few hours, I think that's the way to go. It'll give us a chance to potentially get the full grant award back and so on. If it doesn't turn out that we don't get the additional 6-point-whatever-million, we'll build the best project we can build. And I also wanted to thank the team that did that, that worked on the grant, Debbie Vaughn, Mike Bowen, Sheriff's Department, Robert Newby, Brick Fussell, they busted their tail on John to get this. We were scrambling to get the application in, and it's the second grant application the county's been awarded in the last couple of years. So good job to the team.
We have a request to hear from the sheriff. Those of us who didn't already hear what he had to say on K-Tip might wanna hear it live.
Well, thank you for the time. I would agree with Mr. Vanderpool that, you know, we don't wanna run into anything too quickly if we, if we have the opportunity to build something great. Really, the future of our, our county and the infrastructure that we're getting ready to, to put together is gonna impact several different levels if we try to scale back instead of moving forward with, with the overall project. I think the extension is a benefit to everyone. Gives us time to think, gives us time to look at other options in regards to option number two, maybe. I know that's what we were looking at initially, but I do believe that scaling back to the Volkswagen instead of taking time to look at the future of something really great is really the benefit. Now, having said that, if we, as I said on K-Tip, we have such a good working relationship with the board and the CAO, we've been working very, very closely together. The team that was put together for this project was excellent. We went down and received the initial award, and we, we had some reduced funding at no fault to any of the team. It was just one of those things. So having said that, we never wanna look gift tours in the mouth. I'll take 33 million and move forward and build a very nice facility, but having option five come up even just as of the last few hours, I think is, would be a real benefit to us all.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It's my understanding that the governor's been using Tulare County as a poster child for the AB 109 alignment figure.
Well, I think the benefit, I sat with the governor, and the benefit that we have here in Tulare County, I think that other counties don't, is we all work pretty well together. And we sit down at the table, and none of us wanna hear just what we think we wanna hear. We wanna hear options. We wanna hear differences of opinions, and when we all step off the table and come out of the room, we're all on the same page. And I see that at the board level, I see it at our counterparts in law enforcement, counterparts, probation, district attorney's office, and all those that work on the project. And so having said that, we're working very quickly to the future of AB 109 and what it represents for this county. And I'm real proud of the fact that we're a part of it and working so well with it.
I believe that's a great political card for us to get funding down the road to complete what we're trying to accomplish.
Absolutely.
So I concur with Supervisor Ennis and Vanderpool, let's go for the new option.
I agree, you know, having heard that new option, let there be no misunderstanding. I'm not willing to put another nickel in personally because of what we're looking at for the cost of Porterville facility, which is potentially millions more than what we had set aside. The, you know, finding another $6 million is just not gonna happen. So for me, option one was completely off the table. Even if it was another million or two, you know, I'm not real supportive of that. I think we've stretched ourselves to the limit without having to go to, you know, we wouldn't have to go to Fannie Mae, but we'd have to go somewhere and borrow money. And as you look up here at this board today, we have not borrowed money. We have lived within our means, and I don't think we're willing to go out and borrow money to do this, to post bonds, to do anything of that nature. So I'm glad we came up with option five because, you know, for me, I, you know, there is no more money.
And again, really do appreciate the collaboration of all different departments that are involved in this project. I think they're doing a fantastic job, and we are a poster child in this state for Assembly Bill 109. And that's only because of the collaboration of our different departments. So thank you, Sheriff, and thank you to everyone else that works on your team.
You know, the comments sound like option five is the direction we're heading for.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we select option number five. If that's an action.
Motion by Vanderpool.
I'll second that.
Second by Ennis. All's in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Supervisor Worley, being in Washington DC, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our last item on our untimed items this evening, our last agenda item for this evening will be a presentation from our CAO to receive a mid-year budget report. Mr. Russo.
Thank you, Chairman. Gene Russo's an administrative officer. Before I start, I forgot to mention one individual's name is a part of the team also, Keith Douglas. Keep up the good work, my friend.
And RMA was also very instrumental in moving a lot of the SEQA issue forward.
Yes, you're absolutely right.
They didn't even mention either.
There were a lot of hands touching it. It was a lot, I appreciate your efforts. You know, before I start, I just wanna apologize to the group. This is the first meeting that I've ever attended without a jacket. I walked out of my office, my, my office, my, it's been a long day. Walked out of my house this morning, I must've walked around it, I'm so tired, but.
I would've let you borrow a sport coat, but I might not have bitten you.
Probably wouldn't have. I can put it over one arm. Anyway, so before I get started with my mid-year budget report, I wanted to thank my staff. I think I've got the, probably the best CAO staff in the state. Paul Gero, who's my right-hand guy, Mary Lindsay, John Hess, Debbie Vaughn, Denise Akins, Jed Chernabyoff, who's not here, and Brandy Spray. They do a great job. They do 99 percent of the work and do all the numbers, turn it over to me, and I do the presentation. So, anyway. And I also want to thank our department heads. We've got a great group, as, not only the CCP group, but the rest of the department heads, they, they all, we all get along well. We're all in, we're all here to do the right thing and get things done, and that's, that's very refreshing. So I'll get started. Topics I'm gonna touch on today are really five areas: the mid-year budget report, how our current year budget is progressing, fiscal outlook for next year's budget, state budget impacts, the budget development schedule, which is pretty standard, and recommendations. You know, I've had these on, on my presentation for six years, and I won't go over all of them, but the, the key to our success in the county and how we fared through the Great Recession is really using conservative revenue estimates to cushion potential impacts, both economic and potentially drought. And also, which we'll go into a little bit later, use of one-time revenues, one-time purposes, and for future budgetary challenges. General fund overview was, and I wanted overview was, and I wanted to explain how the county does the budgeting. We have a, we pass our budget in mid-September, and it's for the fiscal year starting July 1st through June 30th. Between July 1st and the day that we pass the budget in September, we use a rollover budget from the prior year. So, our mid-year's a little bit later than other agencies' mid-year overviews. Slayer County, you know, we fared well during the Great Recession. This current year budget, we were able to increase our county reserves by 10% or $10 million. For the second year in a row, we didn't have, after having significant cuts to our departments, we fashioned a budget without cuts to departments. We continue to fund steps and merits. We negotiated, we were in a unique situation, and I'm going to be speaking to our unions tomorrow, and I'm kind of looking forward to tell the story, the financial story. Last year, we had, we had, we had some bargaining units at the table and other bargaining units not. The ones that were at the table had had, we did salary surveys, compared their positions to their counterparts, and we were able to do some targeted increases to folks predominantly in the probation and attorney area. Is it where we want to be with these increases now? It's going to be a work in progress. But they are, we needed to do it. It was a unique opportunity, and we took advantage of it. We also gave a 3% cost of living to our unrepresented that received any increases like all of our employees since December 2008. And keeping in line with our use of one-time monies, we use some one-time monies to transfer to our debt service to try to pay down debt to free up appropriations in the budget, and that's a work in progress. We recently paid off our invincible debt, which freed up money to help the public safety departments pay for their increased workers' comp charges. And last but not least, we had a transfer going out to Capital Projects for a sheriff substation that we will, that we might have to put on hold to help meet that increased dollars for the Porterville jail, as the chairman referred to earlier in the morning. This slide is just a representation of the last five years. As you can see, we, during the Great Recession, we bottomed out in terms of employees in the general fund at 3,500, and we have, we have grown somewhat since approximately, you know, 10%, 11%. Most of those increases are in our Health and Human Services Department, which is approximately half of our county, and due to AB 109. So, that's that. This is pretty standard stuff. It's kind of hard to look at the mid-year and take too much away other than it's fairly consistent from year to year within a few percentage points. So, this shows the mid-year revenues are approximately 30% of the budget, and that's pretty standard because we receive a majority of our revenues in the second half of the fiscal year. So, again, this is mid-year looking at December 31st numbers. Expenditures are higher. They are, they are in line with prior years. One thing that we do in our internal service funds is we charge out for the entire year at the beginning of the year. So, those funds can earn interest and ideally reduce charges going forward. So, the first half of the year, the expenses will look higher on a percentage basis because we do that on purpose. Not only to help our internal service funds, but for transient purposes. We need to meet our shortfall, and this helps us get there. So, the mid-year overview include often, all general fund departments are projected to finish the year at or below their allocated targets, which our office appreciates. Countywide revenue estimates are holding up with slow growth, but again, they're conservative revenue estimates that generate some one-time monies. And most importantly, the structural carryover fund balance, which for the county of Tulare is $5.8 million, is, will be met with some, with no problem. The 1415 outlook for the fiscal year is, you know, the county's still recovering from the Great Recession. It's a slow process. What's, we're experiencing flat or slow growth in the housing and commercial markets. We were fortunate, in this budget year, the assessor provided the assessed value for the county with approximately 3% increase. That's critical because 60, over 60% of our discretionary revenues are tied directly to assessed value. So, if assessed value's flat, we have a problem. This year's budget was built on a 3% assessed value growth in which we used only 1% to cover our costs and pushing the 2% of the next year, and boy, are we going to need it. Statewide sales taxes in Prop 172 have been increasing over the last two years. It's very curious to me that for Tulare County, at the height of the housing market, we received approximately $24 million in Prop 172 revenues. They have, they are up in the $27,000 to $28 million range, and I know the internet, the change in internet sales tax has something to do with it. Last night, as I was preparing for this and staying up too late, I looked at the March numbers, and for the first time in two years, Tulare County's share went down by 10%. Even though the overall sales, sales taxes in the state went up, our share went down, which tells me local activity isn't growing like it should. Local sales tax, the last two quarters have been down. I think the sequestration in last fall and late part of the calendar year certainly hurt the sales taxes in the fourth quarter of last calendar year. The third quarter, there was an adjustment. There was a mistake made, which attributed to the downturn. But sales tax, local sales taxes, which usually are a reflection of the local economy, are not, are declining somewhat and could potentially decline further if the drought continues. And retirement costs, we already have, we find out in December of every year for the following June, is going to go up by $3 million for the whole county or over 10%. Our retirement fund's in great shape. The county board has done an awesome job managing that fund. We are the second or first highest 1937 Act County-funded retirement system in the state, and when pension reform was put in, a lot of the items in the pension reform are mirror what our plan is, offers. So, here I'm going to show some slides graphically, and it's not because Supervisor Cox asked for them. They're typical slides that I've heard in my presentation to help graphically explain our story. As you can see, during the Great Recession, we had basically, well, let's start with looking, starting in year 2005 through 2009, we saw significant growth. And the county, county board poured a lot of that structural growth into salary and benefits. And so, the current salary and benefit percentages as compared to our counterparts are as strong as I've ever seen in my history with the county. Are they where we want to be? No, but they're trending in the right direction. But we hit a wall, and the overall national economy hit a wall in 2009. Fortunately, or dependent on your perspective, our assessor was behind in enrolling new homes. We weren't too happy at the time, but looking back, it was probably the best thing that could happen to us because as they were adding value to the, to the role, they were reducing value. And the net effect was really a static role for five years. The problem is, is that our costs weren't static. Our retirement was, were going up and other costs, and we had to make, we had to make some cuts that were not easy to do, but we are, we fared fairly well. You can see the top, as I indicated, this year's budget was based on a 3% AB growth. We used 1% of it to get things done this year, along with some Prop 172, and as I get to it, we were certainly going to need that 2% next year. So, here's Prop 172. Not the greatest of slides to tell the story, but the top line, the dark blue line, is the current year. And as you can see, starting really with the orange line below it, Prop 72 started to recover. And it was, it had exceeded its, the month prior, to the prior year, for 23 straight months until March of this year. And you'll see it drop, and it's kind of hard to tell, but it's below the orange line, probably approximately with the purple line below it, about a $200,000 to $200,000 drop below it's the month in last calendar year. Hopefully, it's a blip, but, you know, during the Great Recession, it peaked out at $24 million and it bottomed out at 20. And we've, so we've experienced a 20% drop. Let's hope this is just a, just a correction. Local sales tax, as you can see, also tells the same story. It hit the wall in, literally dropped like a, significantly in the third quarter of 2008 and fourth quarter, and is slowly rising back to normal levels. Although the last two quarters have been negative, we'll see, we'll see if things rebound. Clearly, the sequestration didn't help, and perhaps the drought, the effects of the drought we're already experiencing in the fourth quarter based on lack of investment. Who knows? We'll find out as we go. This is a reflection, this is a carryover fund balance. This is really a reflection of conservative budgeting. They were, in what you don't see of the years, 2008, '09, and '08, they were higher than the $16 million figure, and as we were adjusting to the impact of the Great Recession, that fund balance dropped to $11 million, and we're, and it rise to this year, we started this year as a budget with $21 million, and we've done a lot with one-time monies. We've built things. We've paid off a lot of debt. We've helped buy some equipment that desperately needed to be replaced and/or refurbished. And so, that. Outside the general fund, the fire department's fund balance is in good condition. It fared well because it's in its own fund. It didn't have to fight with the guys with the guns over money. So, although it did take a cut in its share of its general fund subvention, it has fared well, and we didn't have to brown out or close any stations. The library fund is another example of a fund that's in pretty good shape. We're in the process of renovating and expanding services in our various library locations. The fund balance is still strong, and unlike other counties that have shut down libraries, reduced errors, what have you, our library fund is in its own fund, receives its own dedicated funding, and that's a good thing. So, it's impact, the recession's impact of library was cushioned somewhat. Internal service funds are projected in the air in good standing. Workers' compensation fund is an area that, we did a lot of things during the Great Recession to help reduce the impact of the reduction in revenues and what have you. We became self-insured in 2005. We built up a nice reserve, and we reduced it by 50% to reduce the impacts of cuts to departments. The fund has, needs to get back up to a reasonable level, which is approximately $10 million. The current year budget brings it to, the funding is 7.2, and next year's budget, we're going to try to get up to $8 or $9 million. And lastly, the various risk management funds are in good shape. Quick overview of the governor's budget. I'm not going to go over every aspect of it here, the various sections. The general revenues are, continue to increase. We're really experiencing a lot of capital gains at the statewide level, which the state is unfortunately overly dependent on. Like this, like the county, the state's expecting modest but steady growth, sluggish growth over the next five years. There's also some language in there for a rainy day account. We'll see if it plays out. They always put it in, but it never materializes. Administration of Justice, which we've talked about quite a bit tonight. The AB 109 framework continues to be developed and refined. The, as Mr. Hess indicated, the governor's budget has $500 million in it for an additional round of county detention facilities. When the state started pushing down felons, ex-felons to counties, they realized that the counties were, were at their maximum in their facilities. I think one of the reasons why we've been successful is we had some room at the inn, and we were able to absorb those folks without too much of an impact. It's been a challenge, but the group's done a great job. In the agglominal resources, there's some opportunities for the county. The cap and trade, the governor keeps playing with those monies to a lot of folks frustration, but a part of that money's going to go to disadvantaged communities. So, as a county, we spent a lot of time and effort. We had a $2 million grant to help categorize our various water systems, and we've spent a lot of time at the federal and state level getting this done, and I look forward to tapping into some of those funds. The state drinking and water program reorganization, the state is dysfunctional. Their departments are dysfunctional, and they're hoping that a reorganization of those monies will help improve functionality. That remains to be seen. The California Water Action Plan, what's interesting is it has, of $618 million, they have about $6 or $7 million for additional capacity, and they defined additional capacity as groundwater monitoring. They also, another thing of importance is approximately $450 million is directed towards the IRWIMPs. The state recognizes that the IRWIMPs, which is our conglomerations of water districts, are really how we're going to get things done in terms of getting our act together as a state to deal with water issues and also to deal with some of the disadvantaged communities. And lastly, of note, the Williams-Schnack Subventions, there's a zero allocation. Governor Schwarzenegger zerted out years ago, and Brown is following suit. And then the county fairs, also has a zero allocation, which doesn't help out our Tulare County fair, unfortunately. Government finances, you know, the mandates, there have been mandates that have been put on the counties for years and years by the state, and the state decided, had paid the counties for, that they're requiring them to do, and all of a sudden, the state decided we don't want to pay. So, they didn't pay, and they suspended the mandates. That was, what, three, four, or five years ago. They're finally going to pay them off, starting in 2015, '16, and you can see the numbers up there. The infrastructure fining districts is really another, another form of redevelopment. I'm not a big fan of redevelopment, so I'm not going to talk about it. The state assessors' partnership agreement, it's, you know, they used to give monies to state to the assessors to help, help them with, improve their property systems because the idea was, the faster the assessors get the value on the roll, the faster the money goes to the state. And so, they're going to restart this program with a pilot program for three counties that we're going to, we're trying to apply to get some of those monies locally. Health and Human Services, Affordable Care Act implementation and financing is in full board. Depending on what paper you read or what television show you watch will dictate the success of that program to date. AB 85 is important to the county because that's the legislation that essentially takes $2.3 million from the county to help, well, it takes, it takes more than that. It takes a significant amount of money, $5 or $6 million, to help the state expand its Medicare, its Medi-Cal program under the Affordable Care Act. But for Tulare County, what's important is that the AB 85, we use some of those funds to pay for jail medical and to the tune of $2.3 million. So, the general fund is going to have to pick up that difference because our Health and Human Service Agency, which used to pay for it, had the funding taken away. So, that's going to be a challenge that we're going to start to address in the 1415 budget. And lastly, as I talked about, the Medi-Cal is being expanded in part with money from Tulare County. Transportation funding is kind of a mixed bag. There's additional dollars in, for funding transportation infrastructure across the board, rail, high-speed rail, highways, what have you. So, that's positive. The higher user count with the reduction is going to have, mean reduced revenues to counties and to cities for that matter. We're not sure what, exactly what that number is, but it's going to be reduced. The C-Tip group is very important. I think it's meeting, as we speak, to talk about the future needs. We have to be careful that the state doesn't push down, you know, state highway costs to locals like we're hearing. And one of our least favorite subjects, high-speed rail, is going, is going forward. So, I'm almost done. So, for future budget challenges, as I talked about, the assessed value, the reason why I mentioned that it's good that we save 2% for next fiscal year is because the assessor received the Consumer Price Index that he uses to apply to properties in the county. Typically, into Prop 13, it's 2%. It's, for most of the history since Prop 13, other than maybe two or three years, it's been in excess of 2%. The assessor's been allowed to put the added 2% values. This year, it's 0.45% or less than half percent. That's not good news for us, certainly for next fiscal year. We won't know until the assessor delivers the role to the auditor in late June, but it's safe to assume that it's going to be flat. safe to assume that it's going to be flat or with a small amount of growth. Retirement costs, as I indicated, we've, we, there was a committee created to look at our retirement fund. We're doing, we're doing a lot of positive things, but you know, when the Great Recession, when you lose 25% of your value, like all the pension systems did, you have to, you have to, it takes some time to, to get back to firm footing. Supervisor Cox came over to my office a couple of days ago, showed me the most recent numbers and as of, I believe through February, we have made up the losses that we experienced in the Great Recession. Now, it's going to take some time to, to work its way through the funding level because we smoothed, you know, revenues and losses, but that's good news. Certainly, it's trended positively. And the retirement board, like the departments that work well together, we've got a good working relationship with our retirement board. They've, they've allowed us to do a few things that have helped, helped reduce the impacts of the recession. I mentioned before, the health re-alignment funds, $2.3 million that we're going to make up. We're proposing to, to bridge about half of that next fiscal year and we'll see what we can do beyond that. And the key for us as a county, the bottom one is the potential impact of the drought. That's significant because in the drought, if farmers are following their fields, farmland is valued by the revenue that it generates. And if the, if the farmland isn't generating revenue, the value drops and if the value drops, then we got a problem because 60% of our discretionary revenues are based directly on assessed value growth or decline. Some areas, the northern part of the valley, experienced 5, 10%, 15% reduction in value in one year. 60% of it revenues, they, that's why those counties were slammed. We were slammed too, but our assessor was behind, so it could have been worse. And then for us as a county, and I'll go up to the second to last bullet, as we grow out of this recession, we're going to have to find a proper balance of, you know, of fully funding workers' compensation, when to give, when to unfreeze some positions that we've frozen and our departments have frozen quite a bit, quite a few, but I think we've learned some things. We've learned that we could probably do more, we can do more with less folks, but we need more folks. So, budget development schedule is, is pretty standard. We're going to do, provide the materials to the board on the 5th of September. The recommended budget to the board on the 16th, we're going to hold hearings and most likely pass the fiscal year 1415 budget. So, the actions that I'm requesting tonight, receive my budget report, ask me any questions you might have, approve the proposed schedule for preparation and adoption, which I just went over, adopt the personnel resolution to add, reclassify, delete, and amends some positions. You know, in a county with over 4,000 positions, we have, we have things to clean up and reclassify at times and there's some items in this year's budget. And then lastly, authorize our distinguished auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector with the concurrence of the county administrative officer to process any budget adjustments stemming from the mid-year report. And that's it for me. Any questions?
No questions. This comment, thanks Gene for you and your staff for another great job and another great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions, we entertain a motion and do a make to approve.
Move for approval.
Second by Ennis, second by Sheed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Supervisor Worley, not in attendance.
Oh, I had a comment.
Yes, sir.
I think from the meetings we had going over the mid-year budget and what we're looking at for 2015, it's going to get rough again. It's going to get tight because the state of California has moved a lot of our funding for its own purposes. So, we escaped the bullet the last recession, but we're looking forward to hard times coming a year from today again. And this county has always spent what we had, but we don't borrow money to operate on. So, just want everybody to be aware, we've been pretty solid and we're probably one of the best financial shape counties in the state of California, but we have hard times coming again for all counties very soon.
I would concur. That being said, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you for your attendance.